What's up y'all, y'all know it's that time of evening. It's Thursday, it's time for the preacher council meeting. Big y'all J forty-five live on the show. I'm here by myself, so it's just a big y'all and big y'all show. I got a call, he walked off home. So we gonna be here and see what's going on today. Uh, all council members are here, little attorney here. They might got some chicks to handle today or Easter bonuses or something. And the attorney is here, I can't believe it. Everybody here, Deacon uh, I like to make a motion is here. Bishop Griffin is here. Attorney, I know everything is here. Calley Cool is here. Missionary, I'd like to rescind my motion is here. And Councilwoman Anna Williams is here. We ain't got no name for Councilwoman Williams yet. I'm saying she's, she's been on the straighten there since she's been here. What's up Jayden? So I'm saying we uh, we're pretty good with her. Mole, what to do, we're up here live. We uh, waiting on the administration, I guess, come in. They, they been out of pre-council since five oh six, I think. They had twenty-four minutes to do all the bullshit talking they wanna do and everything else. And they still up here going on with the Griffin race instead of going on with the meeting. Appreciate the room. What's up forty-five day here? What's up Councilman Griffin? How you doing? Glad to see you. Still know what I'm here for. But uh, man, we uh, here. I don't know how many of y'all know what's tuned in checking out the uh, the Waterboy meeting Monday. But I have this to say. Y'all be talking about the city council is in a mess. City council ain't got nothing on the Waterboy. Any of that Waterboy be cut up. Boy, they go off on each other without like it ain't no tomorrow. But hey, don't nobody come out, they only got ten seats in there anyway. Yeah, that means a lot of trying. I left early. Forty-five uh, was there for the reminder, his phone with it. Yesterday I attended a community meeting with Attorney Roy Zavala. So if anybody out there that's a paying person with preacher water, get in touch with Attorney Roy Zavala and get on that lawsuit. Because the more people on it, the better it's gonna be for y'all. So I think they finna get rid of stars. Y'all tune in, hit that share button. Uh, I might post. Uh, I ain't gonna post no cash out. Y'all be there. Forty-five had a fan of happy. I'm just sitting over here waiting for the attorney to get walked out. I guess he gonna get Deacon, I'd like to make a motion. They, they work uh, on that, that Waterboy meeting. Them folks are true. Like they don't care nothing about it. They gonna say what they gotta say, when they gotta say it to whoever they wanna say it to. So there's no, the Waterboy don't play. They got a couple of good items that supposedly on the meeting date for the city council. So hopefully, I'm saying everything that needs to be passed, be passed. Got a big Easter egg hunt coming up. See the preacher does that area uh, and Councilman Griffin. So I know that should be passed today. Lot of uh, good things going on. So y'all make sure y'all be tuned in, hit the share button. Let somebody else that may not know that we on air that we on here. It's a big y'all J forty-five live on the show. I worked the night, but I'm off tomorrow, baby. I need to be going back down into the Scarlet Pearl. Fan happy. Cause uh, I had a great time down at Black's Green Break. Me and J forty-five, we was in two different, two separate spots. So we done, I do a lot of promo for J sign, my feature for J. New single adds up. Uh, doing promotion for the Gucci Mane and Money Bag Yo concert, which is coming up. And also uh, just done that promote Big Dog Security also. Big shout outs to Becca Clark. I went and seen her perform while I was down there as well. So that go me go coming through the door. Oh man, damn. Oh, they ain't gonna come. Thought I had my co-host, he scared to be on the camera. But y'all, here we go, Councilman.
That's all. You there. No, that's separate. That's separate.
So what all of your...
Yep.
But I'm saying, what are we supposed to get? These bar and these taffy.
That's not necessarily what we're talking about. What you were talking about really? No, I just didn't wanna pass around how this happened to her. So she passed it down. This is the power.
I hope y'all be on hook. That new strip club opening up in Hurwitz, Alabama. Big Dog Security will be on duty as well. You know, people don't wanna show up for me, but they love to turn to you, pay, ask this, do this, do that. Ain't nobody trying to keep going out there, no nobody even show up. Got time, they don't have speed check, getting ran out the road. Hey Tony. Hey Jayden. Hey y'all. Everybody upstairs tuned in. Right, Ken was gonna have to start sharing some of that water. He be coming up out the back with like a ten pack of water. He be drinking all of them, but he gotta sell some of that water. Because I see he got a bottle of feed, he said, nah nah. And I think he just got through one. He got nothing on that too. He got a whole pack. Share that water. Y'all see, I'll let you go on. Council meeting call started five thirty. What's up Ink? Ink, boy, I got some security details coming up. Highlight me, I need you. You know, I don't mess with men, but you one of my, you like a brother, I need you, bro. He said it's supposed to be starting. D one, man. Ain't no Robert Rude all around here. What's up D one? Might need you too, fam. Got some uh, big security thing coming up in a minute. I'm gonna be hitting y'all, looking them inboxes. They gotta go get some more of that water. Even had to go get some more for us. Everybody don't need some water.
It is now five forty-two, now five forty-two, begin.
Five forty-two, so leave my head thirty-six minutes.
And we will begin our regular council meeting. And before you get into uh, the agenda, I just want to remind as a citizen also and citizens of the council that only one person would be able to speak to the council and that is the person who has been paid to work in order to come before us. Only one person is allowed to stand at the podium and the most important one, I won't read all of these. The fact that each person is...
I have a contract going on twenty-eight, I'm here to meet you.
...who are on the agenda. You have three minutes to speak and this also applies to the city council members. If additional time is needed, it must be that the council consent where you could do so and also how many minutes that may be given to you. The other thing is that is that for the fact that no one, we were not tolerated. Anyone that will come before the council and try to define their name and power. I ask this also of the citizen and also of the council to please be respectful. And that goes for us to the citizen and citizens of the council. With that said, then Mr. Mike Murray, you may begin.
Excuse me, I'm speaking up for them, we're speaking up for Pastor Lewis. They will say for prayer. We are preacher to our family and I'm asking those tonight to join us as we pray for Councilman Griffin's mother, Miss Annie, who is not so alive. We'll pray for her as well as... Bless the Lord on my soul and all that is within. Bless his holy name. Bless the Lord on my soul and forget not all his benefits. Father, we are grateful that you love the city of Preacher. You love the citizens here. And we in the city of Preacher are a family. And so we come together as a family and we pray for Elton Griffin's mother, Miss Annie. We ask you extend your hand to her there in the hospital, bring healing to her. May it be well with her, comfort her family during her illness. And Father, we pray for those of our citizens who are still laboring under this pandemic. Those who are ill, those who are grieving from the comfort of them. Father, we pray for our mayor and his staff. We pray for all of the employees of this great city. We pray for each council member and all who are present in this meeting tonight. May we do the business of this city in a way that pleases you. We ask all these things in the name which is above every name, the name of Jesus and the people of God saying, amen. The pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let my...
But I want to say, thank all of the help that I received and the courage that went out for my daughter. Um, on baby four yesterday, uh, the doctor called, meaning she was at work. Uh, and she happened to have emergency surgery. She had the surgery this before yesterday. And thank God it couldn't have been a death situation, but God is good, is prayer, is... I thank you all so much. Uh, I brought him home today and she was written in natural home, the movement. And I thank all of you, the calls and prayers for me. And I all, I do, thank you. Good to see you.
Hello, call Councilwoman Anna Williams.
President.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
President.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Chris.
Councilwoman Jordan Call. Drew. Councilman President O.C.A.
President.
Item five, adoption of a minute. A minute for March third uh, to be approved April seventh. Are not prepared yet for approval.
Uh, have you all read the minute? Uh, I have the correction that I need to make. I have done so a lot of opportunities to not go down to the ground. Uh, anyone else uh, still having trouble with that? This, that call?
Uh, I haven't got access to this. Received my package. I don't uh, we got the email, my package, I just got it today.
Okay. Have I you, I did receive that a little while ago, too. Okay, um, they were even a little up. Um, if the night they come at the hospital, um...
My name is just, I'm off to eat there.
You're not off to eat there?
Calling today.
Okay, alright then. Well, I guess I was a little worried I got for this. Okay, but I did read your... Alright, all of you saying that you need to take the vote?
Just take the next one. Make a motion to take it.
Okay. Again, motion, I need a second to take votes, because that's... Second. Motion and second, roll call, Chris.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Yes, yes, and Chris. Chris.
Councilwoman Jordan Call.
Yes.
Councilman President O.C.A.
Yes.
Take the item, uh, of participation and presentation, petitions and other limitations to the city council. That's it.
Yes. Okay, you may proceed, Mr. Mike Murray.
Item A, Reverend Jamal Pinkley was removed. Uh, headed for West, and will be placed on next one. This agenda. Item B, Mr. Neil Mycooler, sponsorship of funding for professional sports event.
Uh, Mr. Neil My?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please come forward?
Yes, sir.
This is what I'm...
Yeah. Please don't place the easel up, please just, that's uh, assistant operation. Thank you, George.
Uh, would you please state your name, your address, and your reason for coming before the council?
My name is Neil Mycooler. I'm the operational manager for NC Sports. Uh, seeking sponsorship or partnership for professional basketball uh, event that we're hosting here at University of Mobile. My address is thirty-six sixty-one at Woodsoil Board.
And would you please bring some of the tickets?
Yes, sir. All right, we're hosting a unique event and we're bringing it back to the city of Preacher. And we know how rich Preacher is in baseball with different people coming from baseball. You know, Darrell Law, Aaron Randall, and a whole list of other people that are from Preacher that Preacher gonna be present just around the city. But we're bringing it back to help these young men to the University of Mobile. It'll actually be major league scouts, minor league scouts, and independent league scouts there. What they're doing is we bring it up under one roof, uh, one field, one event, to support that event. Where these men will go through a combine, they'll play eight games. There'll be a championship afterwards, but they're all, they'll be, they have an opportunity to either be drafted or either be picked up by one of these leagues or either international. We also have some international leagues that are coming uh, from Dominican Republic, Mexico, and uh, different places. So in all of this being said, let's uh... This is, this is really touching. Bringing baseball back here to Preacher. To me, in a way that we really want this council to give to citizens of Preacher. Because this opportunity just don't come back to the city of Preacher, come back to the University of Mobile. It comes to some minorities, come back to young men that look like me, that play ball. As my son played high school ball, went on to play college ball at Tuskegee and struggled to play ball at the next level. But now it's playing ball at the next level because somebody gave him opportunity. It's young men that are chasing their dream, that are not getting in trouble, that are not shooting each other, killing each other. They're out there literally chasing their dreams, living in cars, staying in hotels, April, because they don't have enough money. And when they leave here, they're paying fees, eight hundred, thousand, two thousand, just to try out and just to live in a hotel eight, ten deep, trying to chase their dream. And bringing it to Mobile, bringing it to Preacher, bringing it to Saraland, bringing it to Mobile towns around the area. It's a safer place, we can do it at a more reasonable rate. And it can help benefit Preacher, Saraland, Mobile, and our young men. This will be the senior bowl of baseball, instead of the senior bowl of football.
Now, you have any information that you do pass along to the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I am here, I'm hearing your application for a partnership, I look at that.
Yes, ma'am, means a partnership or sponsorship.
Mr. Norwood, and let me just say without disrespect to the council or that this is which is uh, this uh, Councilwoman Stephanie Norwood here.
Yes, ma'am.
If the council agrees that Mrs. Norwood works with Mr. Bluey?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, I do need more information. Uh, where do these young men come from, where are you sourced and from?
There's actual seniors that have graduated from college, alright? Or they either graduated this year or they graduated last year due to COVID. They wasn't able to uh, finish out the rest of their season because uh, you had to make room for the new coming, upcoming freshmen. So they uh, either season got cut short, then they got displaced. Some of them didn't get caught up in the draft or anything else, so they chose to go to independent ball. So those that left out from graduating college, went on to play the first two years of independent ball, they're more than welcome to come back to age group between eighteen and twenty-five. Those that if you play JuCo ball, you're more than welcome to play. If you play Division One, Division Two, Division Three, NIA, you're more than welcome to come and try out. You're more than welcome to try to build out your dream, try to build in a safer place and do it at a more reasonable rate. Because I've got the hotels involved, Mr. Wagner down there at the City of Mobile. He's got discounted rate for the hotels. We got some of the restaurants, they giving already discounted rates. And I did not want to do this event at the University of Mobile, but I doubt a lot of you guys know what's going on. The Major League Baseball told me, I get it off the ground this first year, I have their support to get on. The Mobile Sports Authority said, I get it off the ground this year, I have their support to get on. So didn't want to do the event and not bring it to you guys. And it goes on at University of Mobile, you don't know that about it. Even Saraland said, we don't give a sponsorship. But I wanted to make sure that we is happening, knew exactly what opportunity for the press release go out, what's actually going on in the city.
Yes, uh, we, uh, I didn't hear the time, the date, or the venue.
The venue is the University of Mobile, the dates are June second through the fifth. This is the actual sponsorship and partnership. These are the actual fire that's behind it.
For you?
I have enough for each one of you fans.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel...
Oh, you want me to go?
Mr. Cooler, I would like to uh, thank you for coming here to the city uh, sharing this information with us because uh, Preacher has put out some uh, baseball programs for major league. And uh, we have one that here I noticed the books on whether you major league or I was just one. So uh, but I have a question, when you say sponsorship and uh, partnership, is that explained? Uh, put all that in all?
Yes, ma'am, what you get if you uh, if you do a sponsorship, just like I said, this is funny too.
Okay.
And the top one, uh, the sponsorship where it should actually get the name one of the teams. And I was talking to uh, like, not a young man, older gentleman, his dad, he said his dad actually played with the game. Doctor uh, Scott.
Father.
Father, father.
Yes, do you have a deadline going to uh, next?
Uh, as of right now, we're trying to have all funding anybody may say.
May say.
May say.
Say.
Yes, sir. So, yes, sir, so we pay all of the vendors before you, before you actually...
Seven, seven?
Six.
Okay, so this Cooler, I see you have uh, Harold Hardy, that's who we need with the contact person like you.
That's the news media guy.
Uh-huh.
We all, uh, I'm the actual uh... You have assistant, operational manager, Payton Clarkson. You have the CEO, Tanika Steele Cooler, and I have myself, you know. We all feel local, you know, doing things like that. Uh, Mr. Hardy's out of Atlanta, media guy, I think he's going to be your relations director and he's released all well. We have uh, Keanu Jones endorsing us. We have Chris Booker endorsing us, and we have Ted Peavy endorsing us. And those guys are both former baseball players, play here, you know, they're...
And you're right, Mobile has some uh, very talented and famous uh, baseball players. And uh, we feel very appropriate to come back to some of our roots, uh, and catch up with them here. I would say they too, we didn't have like the Mopaw, which is a minor league team. So uh, it is something exciting, so I would like to reach out to you to go back with you.
Yes.
And see how we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, please, I'll stick with you for a minute, for the...
Thank you.
Um, can I really have a, a motion, uh, designate this, uh, Stephanie Norwood to work with Mr. Cooler?
Lord, uh...
Father. Roll call.
Lord.
Excuse me, it's a, it's a four day event, it's a typo on the flyer. That way it say third day twice, we, we getting correct on the next set of flyer, but that is a four day event.
So it's a four day...
It's, it's uh, Thursday through Sunday, and I've already talked to Ms. Clarkson about getting the youth involved.
Most of the children, that roll call, Chris?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jordan Call.
Yes.
Councilman President O.C.A.
Yes, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Cooler, and uh, other gentleman.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Councilwoman Norwood will be, uh, with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, revolution for each day, uh, public purpose on Friday, okay?
Hey, you are getting to see the revolution. And uh, I hope you have a chance to prove it. Is that uh, uh, this, the sand, the sand, the sand, right? The sand. Uh, do, do, do we need to have a very large, Mr. Mike Murray? Would you please... Yeah.
Revolution, yes, to be numbered, resolution approving and authorizing use of Glendale School property for District Three Easter egg hunt and declaring a public purpose. Whilst the city of Preacher along with various community groups, including the closing revolving door organization, Women and Men in Christ, Description Social Club, and carriage battered women and children, battered women and children that desire to have and host an Easter egg hunt on the grounds of the apartment Glendale School property for the benefit... for the benefit and entertainment of the children of the city of Pritchett. Whereas section eleven dash forty-seven dash nineteen of the code of Alabama provides that a city council or other governing bodies of any town or city provide music and other exhibitions for amusement of, of the amusement of its inhabitants. We also opinions of the Alabama Attorney General number ninety-three dash zero 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 one three and ninety-two dash zero zero two fifty-four. Whereas the governing body of the city of Pritchett, Alabama, finds and determine that permitting the youth municipal property and expanding municipal funds for the purpose of hosting and East Day Hunt in the city of Pritchett for the amusement of its citizens has as its objective for promotion of the public health, safety, moral, security, prosperity, contentment, and general wealth of the community and as serves a public purpose, not therefore being resolved by the city council of the city of Pritchett, Alabama as follows. Number one, the gov, that, the governing body of the city of Pritchett, Alabama hereby adopts the above and forthward recitations, findings, and determinations as go fully set out herein. The city council of the city of Pritchett, Alabama hereby approve and authorize the use of old Glendale school property without charge for the purpose of hosting District Three and City of Pritchett and general East Day Hunt to be held on Sunday, self, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, between the hours of four PM and six PM, and hereby authorize the expenditure of a sum not to exceed one thousand dollars for refreshments and entertainment. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption as required by law. Adopted date, uh, signature of the county president, approved date, uh, signature of the mayor, and attached by Assistant City Court.
That is a good resolution.
Captain. Wait to see, uh, the matter of where is the District Three complex that that? So this is last, District Three? I can make the correction, I'm telling you now, it's gonna get the fed up, set up, it is in by City.
Uh, City lines, City does line.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I need a second.
As advised. I do say.
The motion is second roll conference.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derek Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President OCL Elwood.
Yes, motion passed.
Make item, yeah, item. May Councilor Johnson Norwood discuss your pre-council meeting?
Um, yes, uh, I would like to voice my concern for the pre-council meetings, the ways you're holding them right now. Uh, very often we don't have forums, um, if we do, they're late. We have citizens who basically come at four thirty and they're here, and I don't feel it's very respectful of our citizens. So I would like us to do a moratorium on our pre-council meeting and we deevaluate how we do them and, um, evaluate if we actually even need a pre-council meeting.
Thank you. The whole comment for discussion. Councilwoman McCaul, any comment? Councilwoman Griffin? Councilwoman Anna Williams?
Uh, I agree with, with you all, but a lot of times we come out here so early, we should give you thanks, thank you roll over for following Congress and you don't have any people here.
I, thank you. Okay, so my question is, do you want to do a moratorium and evaluate? Or do we just want to make a motion to just continue to get my? I'd like to go up in this, another panel.
I would say do a moratorium, do a evaluation. What do you, what do we find that, what do we react to?
Well, we would actually stop holding pre-council for a set period of time.
Temporary succession?
Temporary, yes. Would we determine how long a period of time that starts to be evaluated?
Evaluation.
Do you have a moratorium here? Maybe you want, maybe you want to put it back on the, uh? Well, I would like the moratorium to start immediately, and I would think we probably need a month or two. So we could get together and actually do evaluate and see how it's working. So can you do a two-month moratorium?
That would be succession of, of?
Pre-council, which is.
Not do that, we would simply start the meeting.
At five thirty.
Um, also, would we also look at the time that we began the, uh, the pre-council meeting? If, um, or if so, if, 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 just, just continue the pre-council meeting?
I think that's what you're saying, presumably saying, if we not hold, if everybody not hold the pre-session for, like, four weeks? And then come back.
I would like to say two months.
Well, eight weeks.
Yes, eight weeks, and, uh, would we give a time to evaluate?
Whether or not we can continue that, we'll, we'll track.
Ask the board, how will we continue the time for regular conference or would we decide not to actually count the meeting? Will that alter the regular conference within the time?
Well, I would like to include in my motion that we continue the regular conference meeting at five thirty, uh, on Thursday evening, without, uh, without the pre-council meeting.
Yes ma'am, you mean exactly, we'll continue for a year or?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question, uh, would it take that long to expand what we need one two months? Because we already see the differences that already.
Well, I think if we give it a two-month period, we were actually calling the other council meetings, we should see, give the chance to see how the vectors would are, and then come back and decide. And then decide if our time is, we continue it, or if we need to do some type of revive version, fifteen minutes or something, um, so I do feel it is, it's a question. So I make a motion that we do an eight-week moratorium on the pre-council meeting, which is at four thirty, and we simply have council meetings at five thirty on Thursdays. After a period of eight weeks, we deevaluate and make a public decision on, uh, that, uh, to happen.
Sir.
Yes. Motion and second roll conference.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derek Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President OCL Elwood.
Yes, motion passed.
Item E, Council President Elwood, hour of sit, foot.
Um, as I stated for a number of weeks, um, the interview committee, they have done their job in all time. They leveled with the information, uh, they did a great job in school. Interviewing each one of the, uh, applicants, uh, we had several that did not show, but those two showed, um, did a great job. Um, it was very, very good. Each council member had his elected person, the third candidate, or the fourth candidate. Uh, so today, in order to move forward, we consider other things that needs to be done. Uh, these names, uh, that was selected by the deputy, uh, committee, uh, it was, uh, Miss, uh, Delores Lucius. The second person, first person was, uh, Miss Deandra, I think I remember Deandro Hudson, and Miss Delores Lucius. And I want you keep in mind also at the time that this interview committee was elected and each council member did submit the name of their own person to serve on this committee, that it would also state at that time that the committee will interview council members, uh, to the ten, but they had no input whatsoever during the time that we, uh, carried out the interview. Also, it was offered to each council person, information packet was given, and it was also those council people, it was offered to them if they wanted to individually interview those candidates that were selected for candidates, you'll have the opportunity to mention. Uh, this is the first time the, uh, council member to my knowledge, it was not easy task, a lot, a lot, a lot of work that had to be done. And tried to do it in a professional way, tried to do it in, in honest and a fair way. Uh, and today, these names are up to vote yesterday night. So Mr. Magnilian, we have a Miss Deandro Hudson, we have a Miss Delores Lucius. Would you call each name?
I'll make a big call.
To accept the two names, okay? I need a motion to accept the two names that were selected, by the committee.
I'll be there. Salute.
In moving, I need a session, I need a session. The motion is second roll conference.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derek Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President OCL Elwood.
Yes, motion passed. Second thing is, what each name.
Need a pause for second for somebody to, to be put up for?
We don't have to be interviewed at the time, okay, we know.
Yeah, you need to, somebody make a motion, if someone be hired, it's on a second, that would be a part of it.
So you have the two names, um, so it is up for, to make a motion as for the name, and to be voted on each name.
Uh, sir.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion for this motion.
The motion, and I have a second on that, second, motion and second roll conference. May I have clarification? Yeah, I was wishing she was the number one choice from any committee. No. With one point.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Oh, we, we're gonna vote on, I have a question, you know, something you're about to. We're gonna vote on two people, or we just gonna vote on one person? We're only voting.
No, no, two people, we can define, I believe you can do that. Now, I would be, not considered, look at the, that's been a motion and a second for one of, one of the candidates. That correct, that correct.
So we should put the other?
Please, now, that is for everybody to know.
Will you put, vote on, vote on both?
If, if someone wants to move in second, put a vote, you can do that, it's up to, how you got them. Motion and second, do either one.
So that will require another motion after this vote, is that what you're saying, uh, attorney?
Right now, you have a motion, second, correct. Uh, Lucius, Lucius?
Lucius.
Lucius, I'm sorry. If you want to consider them both at the same time, if somebody can withdraw that, then nominate both of them, then you can vote on double thing.
So my?
In other words, you're saying this put both on, uh, motion, and this vote on?
All of them table one, all of them table up, this is the second, this put both on, that's all that.
Okay.
You can do that, that's what you want.
Is that an explanation, that's, I'm, is it confusion?
So are we just gonna vote on one person? Because I heard Mr. McCall say Mr. Lucius.
At this point, at that point.
So we would call the other person's name also?
At this, the, I guess, I think, yes, I believe that's the way to go.
Uh, sir.
Yes.
Uh, I understand what the attorney's saying, so I'll withdraw my motion.
You are voting out, so that you're separate from the, uh?
So, that's weird, it's more clear, it's from the attorney, I thought we were going.
Self outside.
There are two ways to do it.
Councilwoman Anna Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood. Epstein. Councilwoman Derek Griffin. Councilwoman George McCall, yes. Council President OCL Elwood.
And this is, I would, of course, the, the, we are not, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not. Okay, okay.
Quick, 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 don't worry. Let me, we're just, just answer, I'm clear.
That was a motion made by Mr. McCall, submitted by, um, Mr. Norwood to vote on Mr. Delores Lucius. Um, then, um, yeah, and then Mr. McCall made a motion to rescind, I mean, to withdraw that motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Norwood, and that motion passed with one exception. So at this point, you stand, there are no nominations, is that correct? Right, right. Floor is now open then, if I'm not mistaken, the floor is now open for, for nomination, is that correct? If someone wants to nominate, put them both in, that's where the motion be made, that's what's in the second, that's what's in the file.
Open that, what, let, let me ask you that, wait, okay, is that, is that how you would like to see it done? Like, that we will understand, we want to, both of them going in, a bit of those?
Yes, because I'm, well, really, uh, confused about it, because when we came in, I thought we were interviewing and the one that had the most points according to the, uh, interview committee with the, the city clerk, but now I'm hearing that you're taking the two people votes with the most highest point, and you're going to choose between these two people to get the city clerk position. And that's where I'm, 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 I'm.
Well, I'm gonna just, end of the day, end of the day, what was stated, when we got the interview committee, it was stated, asking for two people, but it also stated that the council has the right to choose any one that they submitted. That was stated in the review, in the day. The county asked for the submission of two people.
Okay, we got that part.
From the interview committee, and the council has the right to choose or select either one.
That's what it is. So we will be putting both of the names up, uh, a vote? Is that what I'm hearing?
There are two ways to do it. Someone can make a motion in this pocket second for either one of the A or B. Motion to, 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 make that part considered. Or you could motion in second, put A and B up, that nominated, and you roll call in twenty. About five more. Is that? Is that clear?
That, that sounds clear. I think if you put one up, sir, you either vote A or N that individual. If you put both up at the same time, then you have to vote for the one that.
On the A, then I'll then do the same thing.
But if the motion is made to vote for either A or B, when the roll call is made, you have to say A or B.
Just, I guess, you could just type the person's name and roll it through. So instead of A, you're saying A.
In other words, you're saying call the person's name that they're voting for, okay? Call, and all.
Can you do that?
Yes, would that be most acceptable? Would you agree? Yes. Call the person's name, please, would you all understand, council members? When, you do, I'll be down, vote that.
So if I might just repeat this, there'll be both, both nominations, both persons will be taken nomination. When the roll, we buy roll call first, when the vote is called, each council person will say which votes that people. If they're voting, is that correct? Yes, sir.
Can we understand?
So if you're the pocket, you can move, say, put both in.
Make a motion that we are for the votes candidates.
That would be, I'd like to make a motion.
Discuss and have a solution.
I second that motion, we give motion and second, it's a matter of roll call first.
It's just for that, then you, then you vote. That one was right, you heard that one was right.
Yes.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
No, no, we're gonna, just, just, oh, then we're voting.
They're voting that both of them are in, they're gonna vote.
Okay, we're voting for the ass he's running.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President OCL Edwards.
Yes, motion cut.
Now you have, the next vote will be, roll call, which one is what you, you vote, is that correct?
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Miss Hudson, Andrea Hudson.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Uh, Miss Delores Lucius.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
I understand, I'm voting.
Councilman George McCall.
Solution.
Council President OCL Edwards. Our vote, the majority, our vote from this committee.
City clerk, so the court can direct.
Your man's in court. Sir, your man called the vote. The vote, Miss Delores, Miss Deandra Hudson, vote from, Miss Anna Williams. Miss Delores Lucius receiving votes from, Ms. Norwood. Mr. McCall, and Council President Edwards, and Mr. Griffin, Epstein.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, may I comment? Uh, can we let the record state clearly that, uh, Miss Lucius was the number one recommended candidate?
I think we probably, I'm not sure, what city clerk candidate called out? How many votes each candidate received?
Miss Lucius receiving three votes, Miss Hudson receiving one vote, and that was one, Epstein.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
City clerk, just to clarify, take the back, so we'll have clarity for the council. Of those two candidates from the interview process, which of those two candidates received the most votes?
One, you have a candidate, sir.
Do you have the record of who received the most votes from the interview process?
When the interview committee presented their report, Miss Hudson's name was called first, Miss Lucius's name was called second. I cannot attest to what the votes were because those votes and numbers were not given in council meetings. And based upon how they called them out, one would assume that that was so, but I cannot attest to that.
When she was here and I read the, uh, nominations out, when she said who number one was and who was the runner up. So that would clarify that the other person, one candidate was higher than the other. But at this point, she didn't communicate our selections, I just wanted to clarify that, because I'm just, Councilwoman Norwood, I, I just was confused on who was the first to talk.
At the interview, not just for the interview committee.
I think we should do this, I think we should, is that what we could do, two of us, like, all other things?
Yes, but I still would like for the record, and if we could get the tally sheet from the interview committee, because it's my recollection that the A selection was Miss Lucius, and the B selection was, uh, Miss Hudson. Now, other people may have heard other things, but we can look at the record and the tally sheets and make sure we have the right data. Uh, Madam, Madam President. That's what I call myself on about. Miss, uh, Madam President, I have a statement too. When the interview committee, the one that they told was Miss, uh, Karen, to make the announcement, and she stood there, she said the first one was Miss Hudson, and the second one was Miss Lucius. And they went as far as going into a meeting with you, you president, on the discussion of these two ladies. And I'm not going into what I went on in that meeting, but they were very matter of fact about Miss Hudson, that they chose her without a doubt. Were putting terrorists in, in that meeting, but a liberty until I left, you all in there. And I did tally up the things myself, and gave up our thinking, and Hudson came up number one. And myself and Miss Norwood was in there, but she's changed her statement. Because she stated that Miss Hudson was a very true interview, very well. Now she's changed her statement. I heard the lady interview. I sat in that room, I did not make one statement to any of them in there, in my back, in the back of the room, and I heard the interview. And you got one of them touch me, because she was very well knowledgeable on how to run that office, and the other one was knowledgeable in military. And Miss Hudson had worked with Mobile, and she showed us how she could take Avenue away, and she could run that position. And Miss Lucius was very knowledgeable dealing with Iraq and Iranians from what military.
Oh, but unfortunately, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'll never do, never, I'll give Ms. Williams.
Just to clear, uh, to answer Mr. Griffin's question, there, the tally sheet I saw, it wasn't one point two. One had one fifteen, one had one fourteen.
That's why I said it was fair to put a vote up, I just was making sure it's always fair. Yeah, I just, yeah, I think it was fair to put a vote. Yeah, I'm proud of her, I got this.
Look, look at this, I'm gonna be done with this.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
End of the day, and I will repeat it all week long, Mr. McCall. It was stated that the council, the reason why I asked for two candidates for them to select, because it would be up to the council to select either one that they wanted to. What was one point difference to come here? It was stated in the day, and I keep hearing, before I didn't see the tally sheet, the whole time. All the information was given in a packet, all of it. The interview person got each individual person on that committee. The questions and how they rated it.
I hope it's, I'm finna take seven more minutes just to explain this shit, the voting been there, fuck it, let's go.
And gave to each council member, left in the mayor's office for confidentiality, because of the personal information that was on, in, in that packet. And told each council member to pick up that packet. After the interview was over, and I collected from the inter, uh, the five members of the interview, I packed it up for confidentiality sake, because of personal information on each one of those people. I left them in the mayor's office and told each council member to pick it up. The story by each member of each one of those candidates was done by the interview committee and was in each council member's packet. Now, I don't know how I could do it any better than that, okay? But the council said in the day, two people, please select, and the council will decide to see. That's all I can say, Mr. McCall. I'm done, Mr. McCall.
Man, next item, god damn, I'm gonna keep hearing the same shit over and over, the voting been made, fuck it. The city fuck again. If they had a turn, send them back with them, they'd be lost like a motherfucker anyway, don't know about, uh.
Well, we can, we can read it back, please.
Roll call vote, Miss Deandra Hudson, one, Miss Delores Lucius, three, one, Epstein.
Thank you.
That's two.
Thank you. Would you note that?
Yeah, I know the clique was gonna vote together anyway, so I don't even know why the fuck it was even put up for a vote.
Last goodness.
They got a clique over here with the councils, they like, they got a clique over there with the water board. Everything in prison, damn, they're running off a clique itself in the administration.
Chair would notify the person that, uh, that chosen to serve as the city clerk, uh, by phone call and a form of ballot.
I need a second, please. Say, the motion is second, that a phone call be made is also for number one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the motion is second, roll call first.
Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President OCL Edwards.
Yes, motion cut.
Thirty-five minutes for nothing.
Council President Edwards.
I'm gonna stop coming to these motherfucking meetings, I'm gonna have to figure out something else with this shit.
This particular idea, you also receive some time, go several, several times. You already know the attorney general's opinion that the council.
The more I come to this motherfucker, the dumber I get.
True. Ha, and a sister, and a key word is for this to be, this is it. I have given you all a job description.
I don't blame you, man, I leave, ain't shit going on about, ain't nothing changing or nothing.
And I think this is the second or third week of, we were emailing y'all also. So I pass this along to the attorney, he looked at it.
I don't blame you, man, I walk the fuck up, I took this, I'm about to walk the fuck up, naturally.
What I need now to move forward, I need for to.
Stop saying the same damn thing over and over, and vote right, instead of being a cheat.
The motion is second, roll call first.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they ain't say fuck this shit, she got the fuck on by this doozy.
Yes, sir.
So with the city, the assistant city clerk, what we want to do, is there gonna be an interview process for that?
It's gonna be an interview process, and talk to the council, how they.
Exactly, Lila. There's always some buddy shit going on, but yeah, well, you can't fault, uh, the buddy system, the buddy system gonna roll anyway. Folks sit up there and, and vote buddies, they know that, uh, McCall was the deacon, I like to make a motion, A man. No, no, it was gonna go along, whatever, who helped her get in the office, so, yeah, well, that's a three man clique now. And shit, they do, they do just like going to war, boy. They voting a clique. Y'all knew, uh, deacon, I like to make a motion, I didn't do shit the first time, he was in the office, y'all voted right back in, that what the fuck y'all get. Uh, y'all know when Norwood, the man was in there, how he did the shit, y'all voted the white man, that what the fuck y'all get. Yeah, that was, I let forty-five speak on that, fuck it.
Two D, that's the key word, a sister two D, okay? Okay, thank you.
So they gonna be talking to this man, he finna move him out of the office, man, they crazy.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President OCL Edwards.
Yes, motion cut. Next slide, please.
Item, item eight, Council President Edwards, um, training classes.
I gave you all a copy of the calendar for the training classes.
Same as what I'm calling.
For the city clerk. And what I am asking.
I thought that was for the council.
For all of those dates, which are in Florida, the first one, I think it was in November, no, actually, the first one is April twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth. April, it's only seven, twenty-ninth, this, this is. Uh, you have, would you read those dates off on your face? And would you note them, or you could get a copy?
I got a copy.
You got a copy? But, yeah, okay, so the first one is April twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, uh, moving just in time, hopefully, to, to there. Uh, the next one, the municipal clerk institute, October nineteenth to twenty-one, that's also in Memphis, Alabama. November twenty-ninth to December first, this is at, uh, Monkey Shoals, Alabama, that's an annual conference. And then November thirtieth is also Monkey Shoals, in the hotel, it's like, okay. Those are the dates. Also, um, the exclusive, uh, there are also workshops that can be also taken online. Um, that person will make sure that that person get that information, um. And that's which will be finished in person. So that, uh, that's the days, I am asking for packet for.
Yeah, here my vote count, and this one, this one, they don't wanna vote. I'm fine, I'll vote for the president, no vote on any town, yeah.
But you're authorized, you're perfect, ten, definitely.
Authorized, ten, and to all the authorities, to drop all in. To drop all in. I need a second, please.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call first.
You made the motion, right, ma'am?
Yes, I did.
Councilwoman Annie Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derek Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President O.C.L. Ellis.
Yes, motion is ten.
Not a tip.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what is the proposed starting date for the new city clerk?
It'd been so many worse, uh.
The reason, uh, we're asking is because of the concern regarding.
I don't think neither one, I'm saying, nobody know.
That budget currently, um, Mrs. Beck Miller in Texas is already at capacity, and we're hiring the new city clerk and possibly an assistant to the city clerk. So the concern is just, uh, we could, relative finance will consider that budget line item for salary purposes, uh, for payroll. Uh, now, the chair.
Let me just let you, Mr. McCall.
Now, the chair. Uh, if we can, uh, we can move forward with the, uh, this, then the affirmation, uh, to the person. Uh, I, I know there's some issue there, which, uh, we used already in conference, said in summer to discuss, I don't think we would take care of that. Yes, I would, and hopefully right now, that. They're voting out.
But this coming Thursday?
Hopefully, maybe two weeks.
Either two weeks?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe this Thursday, we're having a resumé. That's the, right.
Okay. Uh, did you do that, Mr. McGee?
Yes, I did, and that's all.
And I remember just like this, also, what I wanted to take a look at. Uh, there are a number, number of positions that are not filled, we don't have.
Yeah, the meeting, the meeting, uh, Ms. Davis was here, uh, thirty-two minutes.
The call, okay.
And you're gonna do what they wanna do, when they wanna do.
It was a Saturday, and that was forty-first, forty-first. And it should be still renamed as, still on that touch.
And you will get back?
Yes, ma'am.
And also tell the extension.
Right, I already settled time.
Okay.
Already. So, that's, we already settled time for the matter. That's why I'm gonna discuss. Okay, thank you. No, ma'am.
You don't wanna do.
It's just all.
Okay, fine, all right.
Next item, uh, item I.
Okay, uh, this is a filing, a consent, incentive. Uh, these are the final tools that is certified for E M P. At the time.
Exactly, it don't make no sense.
Yeah, and it was.
Nah, Ms. Davis, we here forty-five, been saying click just as long as you have. Soon as we seen it was a click.
Twenty, twenty, back and over.
We got records of that.
Uh, that those.
We been saying together.
And they, they got certified that they would receive an incentive. So somewhere or another, it was put on the document, okay? So this is why, uh, it was stated that it was a lack of the fact that the policy and procedure was not done. Policy and procedure that personnel board requires is lost and has been done for quite a while. So, that information, Mr. McCall, I.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, would you stick with your vote?
That was also in the discussion next week, also, so, right, that, that'll be back on this Thursday.
Also, would you please check on the bank whether or not the policy and procedure has to be signed off the paperwork and has to be signed off by the mayor to check to see whether or not that has been done and forwarded to the first floor, okay? All right, that's what it's. That is a form of a motion or a dispute?
This, uh, motion that we will give, I'll give to the administration, then I got back to the council.
Okay, do you have that for matter of record, uh, Mr. McGee?
There's, there's a motion, and I get clarity here. Your motion is to. I'll give it to the administration. Give it to the administration and bring it back to council meeting on next Thursday, correct? Yes.
Here was the mayor, mayor and his wife, and everything else.
On this Thursday.
Here was the mayor, and instead of their second meeting, whether or not the paperwork has been signed and submitted to the first amendment.
Right.
Okay, that's, that is. I need a second on that too. Motion is second, roll call first.
Councilwoman Annie Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derek Griffin. Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President O.C.L.
Yes, motion is ten, next item.
Item, item J, Mr. Clement, Emmy Bronze Medal.
This is for informational purposes, administration wanted to report to the council. From the loss control division, uh, we received the bronze award for the loss ratio being, uh, between twenty to forty percent. So enclosed, uh, for all city councils, is the Ritz manager award for twenty twenty-one.
I mean, now, if you, if you, if you, if you, if you pay out that.
That's it, that's, that's.
Okay, thank you, that's good news, um, let me have a second. Okay, next item, just a quick.
Item K was removed and free counsel, Mr. Clement, until it's over, mainly intended. Next item is committee report, bill report. Big committee.
Yes, sir.
Hey, my baby. I'm a grandstander.
Okay, okay, Mr. McGee, I know, we need to, you want to talk to him?
So have the big government, they, you have a member from the police department, the city enforcement, they have, they have their trees, they use them to back.
Robert Mason.
Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunications celebrates and honors those who dedicate their lives to serving the public, usually held every year during the second weekend, April. And whereas Patricia Anderson of Contra Costa County California Sheriff's Office conceived the idea for a National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in nineteen eighty-one. It was quickly adopted in Virginia and North Carolina. By the nineteen nineties, the National American, the National Association of Public Safety Commissions officials, A P C O, convinced Congress of the need for a formal proclamation. And whereas every day and night, all across the country, public safety telecommunications answers emergency and non-emergency calls. They connect callers to emergency care and provide valuable resources to those in need and. Whereas in nineteen ninety-four, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week was firmly recognized and is celebrated each year to coincide with National Nine One One Education Month. An estimated two hundred and ten million calls are made to nine one one in the United States every year in many areas, eight percent or more, uh, from wireless devices. We, the city of champions, would like to honor our dispatchers who give in, give it their all to protect and serve our citizens. Police and fire departments on a day-to-day basis. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Pritchett, Alabama, Hillborough, proclaim this week, the second weekend, April of twenty twenty-two, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of Pritchett, Alabama. And witness whereof I have here unto, setting my hands and calls the seal of the city of Pritchett, Alabama, to bill fix Jimmy Gardner, mayor, city of champions.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I'd say we will see you items.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, big committee.
Uh, chair. On the, uh, big committee, uh, we had, uh, no beds, uh, on the municipality, uh, sidewalk project. So we, uh, submit to rebuild again, and, by understanding probably because the timeframe of the, uh, starting the work and to complete the work, some, some, some problems with that. Because this project is more intense than just a regular sidewalk that, uh, is included sidewalks and railings, uh, and account railings in different locations. And, uh, they come into an issue about, uh, getting supplies and, uh, shipping to do this, so what the engineers are now, if what happens, we can be against the timeframe of them starting this project, and we're putting that out to be.
That was, that was.
This about the sidewalk.
This cover.
Yes, ma'am.
This, that's.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
There's nobody there. It'll be a medium motherfucker.
I need a committee, now, the chair. Uh, just wanted, uh, to acknowledge that, uh, we did help pass, uh, committee slash, uh, work session on this past Tuesday, and it was very important, and, uh, and we gathered lots of information to, uh, find a way, find out to and, uh, infrastructure to, uh, move the city forward. And, uh, that was our first, uh, work session with the mayor and council, and I think that we went over very well of, and, uh, we just getting ready for the second meeting, we announced the date and time for that, uh, to come back together and collect it. Uh, each, each council member, along with the mayor, had a, uh, questionnaire sheet given to them, uh, the ones that wasn't dressed down enough one ago.
Um.
And if you would, please, may I assert to, to get a, answer the question and make sure.
Um.
Uh, the council secretary, no later than, uh, Monday, uh, April the eighteen.
Um.
So we can, uh, uh, collect all of the dollars.
Um.
Put a package together to, uh, send it off and get it ready for the next session. And here we are on eighteen. To, uh, all the six that there, uh, move forward.
Um.
That's, uh.
Uh.
About, about after four. Mayor's report.
Mayor's report.
Yes, ma'am, just, uh, two things for informational purposes, and one for, uh, a, a date of information, but thankfully programs, uh, still also a great start. Uh, we have to get businesses that are reported in that cell program to, uh, to, to update that business licenses. Some examples have their businesses, uh, that did not review their licenses, uh, two thousand nineteen. That program has brought some, uh, notice to those business owners. So we appreciate the efforts of, uh, Mrs. Sammertree, who told important, uh, our city clerk's office, and also our prosecutor, Mr. Shell, Doc, uh, regarding that program, and of course, Mayor Gardner. Uh, the concerned citizen, uh, did respond to the email that I sent out to the council, and also, uh, to mayor's impression. Uh, they appreciated, uh, and the last thing was the final resolution from the state of the work that was requested by the council for three, three health, uh, who was hoping to receive a status update, I guess, this week. I was impressed by some, so I'll just want to report upon that for a second, please.
Okay, uh, you know, and for a bit, us that, Mr. Finn. Right now, if you, I know you're aware, you, we got people that is in need of a statement that don't have any, right? Okay, so what it was suggested to me, if you remember, we have other places instead of the safety house, and two weeks, it never worked out. Uh, we could have a, 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 a general answer that concerns the use of that building. Uh, I think the latter is suggested response to me, and we need to deal with the relationship with state. I will, help up, do it with your mate, am I correct, your mate, that your mate, I bet. Is one go really, uh, have a time of safety, but also sort of putting none due to the fact that federal money is involved in it. And there are some do and don'ts, whether or not that money's gonna be made over there with the stewardship private care forever. Uh, but right now, to show you the bad weather that we have in magic, possibility of a useful best safe house by the first responders, so now we have to, uh, over to apartment, the apartment of this, this, I don't know what, the store or whatever, that I'm in that place, they have nowhere to go right now.
You talking about our one, and we're aware of that. We were just referring to, and I think two weeks ago, we mentioned to the council, and it's that's the pleasure to of, of the city, of the council attorney, to utilize another building space aside from the safety room. So the proposal was to use the auditorium for a scheduled event by victory. We're just missing that presentation for the vote that was done by the council.
Uh, also, and that's state, uh, now, the chair.
Uh, a little, I discussed with you, Mr. Ryan. Two places, so look at, you know, you're not, am I correct? Am I correct?
Two places, you're right.
This one upstairs over at the police annexed building. This way, from, to be, right. Also, it was discussed by doing, uh, that.
It was, uh.
The whole deal.
The whole, uh, city hall.
Which has two deep, large rooms.
They do.
Okay, so, we discussed that, so.
Right, the chair.
I thought you was from looking through, I was, I didn't remember from the evening night.
And we did, and we agree with you, uh, now, the chair, we're just missing the resolution to go and vote for the victory to utilize that building for public purpose.
Now, the chair. Now, the chair.
The building you recommended.
Now, the chair.
Now, she ignoring Deacon, I'd like to make a motion.
Here, I recommend it, I suggest you all look at it, okay? So now, it wasn't put out to the council because of the fact, no information was told that you could put out to the council.
Okay.
Okay, so you said you waited for a resolution, no, you're not. You waited on whether or not that will be applicable, I mean, okay, a place for those people to do that, and then to me, I think it was, uh, additional information also was needed, okay?
They care, I don't know some ways, buy some bull crap to lick it is. Ain't nobody here now but the pastor. And Deacon Sweet Potato.
And also the word as far as.
And the police, and my dumb ass.
Also, uh, it was for you all to go and evaluate the two buildings that was named, bring back to the council, which building y'all refer to use their whole city hall, uh, the annexed building upstairs. Also, it was, uh, asked for you to get the information from the organization, the scope of work they would be doing, and what kind of, uh, uh, what they would be doing in there, because some things that they would be done, we cannot, uh, be allowed on a civic property. Uh, it's a violation. So that's why we need the scope of work and what all they're gonna be doing, we need everything lying out. And from that, and once y'all decide which building, bring back to the council, you want to use this building or that building. And if the scope of work called Atlanta, then we can prepare the resolution like that, sir.
So to answer those two questions, yes, the building was decided on, not to you, the building across that was old city hall, simply because they're still black mold. The building, old annexed building was too small, dangerous for citizens to come in, that's why we were proposing, once again, the auditorium, we proposed two weeks ago. And now today, the scope of service and the scope of work that we're referring to was emailed back on four seven. Prior to four seven, it was emailed again, uh, on April, I'm sorry, March the thirty-first. And, uh, we have those two times, that email for both of those scope of works being sent out. And then T.J. provided that information again last week. Uh, so the scope of work, if it's not, I guess, sustainable to the council, then by all means, we can add, update, and change, uh, the scope of work to our understanding has been submitted and which we're choosing to utilize the auditorium for the purpose of Victory Health and the service that they provided.
Uh, Mr. Clements.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, if you would, forward that to our, uh, council attorney, and also a contact person that he can speak with. And if they have a attorney on board, that they can collaborate together.
Amish Rich.
To, uh.
Oh, so happy birthday to former councilwoman Samantha Richardson, they.
What is vice, what the city attorney, to collaborate with?
Uh, the, the, the city attorney, no, just.
Not the city attorney, the organization.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. We need their attorney, he'll, they have one.
If you, uh, listen, I'm a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like for you to be able, not a telephone, I think right now, for the, because this is.
I ask, ask for a contact.
We're asking, asking for that, okay? But if what is due you, and you can do what you're asking me done, is not enough information. So I really think that the attorney needs to shut down one-on-one with whoever is over and responsible for this program. Now, is that Dr. Lightfoot?
Because.
Is my son Ken?
Yes.
Is he over the program?
He is.
That is to attend Harry, you mean, would you provide him a telephone number?
The web, right, make it so I can read that.
But he needs to call one-on-one, he needs to call one-on-one. Okay, so please, just, provide, will he contact with Dr. Lightfoot, okay?
We'll do it again.
I think that we can counter for the.
Okay, thank you, councilman.
Alright, thank you, Mr. White. Thank you. Anything else?
Announcement.
Any announcement, please?
An announcement.
An announcement?
A German.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, I need a second. Second, most of the, most of the second row, call me, please.
Councilwoman Anna Williams, Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President O.C.
Yes.
Time seven oh six.
Thank you so much, love, it's so late, thank you. Thank you. It don't matter what it's done. It's same.
Y'all, good. Alright, now, I got something to say. It's a shame, though, that it be so many people with complaints about what's going on in the city of Pritch. What's going on with the council, uh, the water board, all that stuff. But it's very few citizens that come out to any of these meetings, that come out and address their concerns, that go and get on their agenda so they can speak towards the council, whatever. The people that y'all voted in the office, uh, I think, you know what I'm saying, it, it was a shame. Y'all seen how many people's in that left today, even though, you know what I'm saying, I know, the council, a lot of times, you hear the same old shit over and over and over. I get tired of hearing the same old shit over and over and over, and be sitting up in there wasting my day and my time for seeming like basically nothing. But I would just like to say that, if you ain't getting out to vote, then no complaining. Y'all, uh, at least, you know what I'm saying, I, I hope everybody got a vote for Moshe Donald, for D.A. of Mobile County. Because this other stuff, man, like how it's going on, is just really crazy. You got a council that can't agree on really nothing, because you got a clique that's whatever they think, you know what I'm saying? Or however they feel like with friendship ties or whatever, that's the way it's gonna go anyway. When these people voted in the office, these people were voting in to be the liaison for the citizens. Not, you know what I'm saying, vote on stuff on personal agenda, agendas. You welcome, Ms. Williams? Uh, and what I'm saying is, if your council representation is always voting on their personal feelings and their personal agenda, you need to, you know what I'm saying, vote them out. You need to vote for somebody that's gonna vote for what concerns you and your neighbors and the citizens in your community. Because apparently, that's not what's going on. You know what I'm saying, like, you, you got, the last administration, yeah, it was a clique. Me and Forty-Five been saying that. I seen, well, Ms. Davis, you said you was the first one that said, I, I don't agree with that. Uh, I know me and Forty-Five had been saying before we even first started covering the council meetings, that it was a clique up there. Uh, I'm just not getting with what's going on with the water board. But as far as the council, now with this new administration, it's a whole nother clique. Uh, seems like any type of way that you see the council president vote, Deacon, uh, uh, I like to make a motion, he gonna vote with your way, she vote. Uh. Council, councilwoman, uh, I'mma just vote the same way y'all do too, but act like I'm smarter than everybody else, she gonna vote the same way. So, you know what I'm saying, it's a whole clique, you know what I'm saying, I'mma say this here too. People don't like a lot of things I say, I don't give a damn, but Ms. Elwas changed a lot from how she was in the last administration. In the last administration, Ms. Elwas was one of the most humblest council people that was sitting up there on, like, her, uh, councilwoman, former councilwoman Samantha Richardson. Happy birthday, Councilwoman Samantha Richardson, by the way, as well. But those were the two humblest people on that board, on that council in the last administration. Y'all set up there like dummies and voted, Deacon, um, 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 I like to make a motion, as back in the council, when y'all seen he do a goddamn thing for y'all last time, so you put him back in there, now he on the finance board and some other shit too. So get what, I just, I look at it like, yeah, well, it's the dumbest fault. Y'all won't get out and vote, then when you do, you know what I'm saying, it's the same people that don't know what's going on in the council meeting that's going out to vote, and they vote for the same people that ain't did shit eight, twelve, sixteen years ago, four years ago, however many years they even been in office, but y'all keep voting them in. When the other people, you know what I'm saying, wanna come in and help and do right by the city, y'all look at them sideways, 'cause you don't, you feel like they supposed to go along with whoever been there the longest, or whoever you think that got more experience, which you ain't even paying attention to what's going on in the council meetings that's fucking day-to-day, uh, operations up. 'Cause every time the, in his administration trying to do something to push the city forward, you got it where the clique in the council i- is saying fuck that and just fucking everything else, so, there ain't nothing, you know what I'm saying, nobody can really do. That's crazy, chief, I ain't even know you don't help, but I, I didn't know that they didn't even vote on, on the budget this year. But see, what I'm saying, they worry about everything else, hadn't even voted on the budget. So what they running off of? They probably still running off Troy Efrom's budget from way back then. Man, if y'all don't get out and vote, man, some, I'm talking about it and make a change, I'm changing, like, I, I'm getting sick and tired of coming here almost every week, you know what I'm saying, wasting my Thursday, I work on Thursday nights. You know what I'm saying, it's just like, we messing around and come out here to, to inform people. Sometimes, you know what I'm saying, it, it, the views are good, sometimes it's not, but most time, only time the views hop up, if there's some messy shit going on with it, but get what, sometimes, you know what I'm saying, it ain't all about the messy shit, it's about the shit that's gonna help make life better for your children and your grandchildren that's gonna come along later on. That's the reason why I do a lot of stuff, I do, you know what I'm saying, to make sure that stuff is gonna be better for my children and my grandson and grandchildren to come, but, boy, like, the folks that be right there who be getting all the bullshit handed to them, they don't give a damn. And shit, you know what I'm saying, starting to be overwhelming, because I could be doing a whole lot of other things on Thursday nights, then, you know what I'm saying, coming to, here to the A.J. Cooper House of Hope for this bullshit with the clique. 'Cause that's all here, and y'all think this clique over here is something serious, that water board clique, boy, show no fucked up. Them folk don't give a damn, they talk, boy, woo, woo, woo. If y'all ain't see it, go back and look on the live Monday night from the clique. Over there, like, boy, they got a real clique over there. They, they fooling that new lady to vote however they want them to vote. And she just going right along with it, it's just so much bullshit be going on, man. I swear, I love the city of Pritch, but sometime I be almost thinking too. The city of Pritch probably ain't gonna do right until you get a bunch of white folks involved, and that's sad to say, being a black man. You know what I'm saying, that's full of black power movement, but, boy, I tell you, one thing about our people, we might not do right by each other, but let them white folk get involved. Oh, everybody go to jumping in, yesa, mouser, yesa, yeah, mouser, mouser, I know, yesa, yesa, mouser, I do right now. It was a free class for these folks that's on the council to go to right now to learn about Robert's Rules of Law. I mean, Robert Rules of Order, Robert, I can't even think right, these folk got me getting dumb, every time I come here, I get a little bit dumber. They won't even further attend it. Like, what the, man, I don't know, get with it. I ain't gonna keep on, you know what I'm saying, getting dumber and dumber every time I come up here, for y'all sake, that won't even first vote. So, I don't know now. I'mma start doing like Bruce, I'mma start dropping that cash out, and I'mma, you know what I'm saying, have it where it's limited audience, just the folks that, you know what I'm saying, appreciate it, you know what I'm saying? Where they can watch what's going on, 'cause it's really sad to waste your third evening, uh, coming out, trying to, you know what I'm saying, uh, hoping for something better and don't nothing better ever happen, like. Boy, it is really sad, you hear me? Like, I'm talking, it's sad, sad. We got, man, we gotta do better as a people, we always talking about we want something better, but ain't nobody doing that for it. Man, we'll talk about it all day. Ain't nobody gonna vote though, vote day come up, oh, everybody asleep, I ain't have no weight, I ain't have no gas. But shit, let, let, uh, let it be a free concert over at, uh, at, at, at South, everybody there. And that's the bullshit, man, I'm done talking, I ain't gonna hold y'all up long like the council did. Appreciate y'all being tuned into the Big Y'all J forty-five live morning show, y'all welcome, but, hey, I don't know how much longer this shit here gonna go on.